To Madam Supervisor, ladies and gentlemen of the council and all assembled, I say good evening. The Media and Marketing Department is a new department within the Williamsburg County Government. It is run by Stanley and myself Jeff Singleton. That's J E F F S I N G F E T I R. You laugh, but I'm at a P I O school. In school, whatever you are recorded, you're supposed to spell your name so they didn't find you. Is that right, Mr. P I O? Just showing you what to learn. Presently, we have two forms of communication, Facebook and YouTube channel. It is very important to reach citizens, reach as many citizens as possible, and that's what we try to do. We've had several campaigns during the past year. One was a soup chat where we went to all seven counties to give information and have question and answer sessions done by the supervisor. We established the employee of the month and department of the month programs, which was voted by citizens as well as staff. We have popcorn Friday. Every Friday during the summer months, we have popcorn from 1:00 until 3:00 P. M. Currently in production of an infomercial, Williamsburg County Program Footprints in Williamsburg County, which honors the legacy of a prominent citizen. Decades of citizenship award goes to someone who is 80 years plus. For Nurses Appreciation Week, we delivered flowers. Williamsburg Regional Hospital and the Carlisle Nursing Home. And we had a back-to-school welcome with the first day of, first and second day of schools. We went to the schools and greeted children coming back to school for the new year. We've had a few workshops, one on areas property so that citizens can learn about that process. Due to the tragedies that we had in the county, we had a brief counseling seminar, which was very good. We had a housing workshop so that citizens could learn of the loans and grants given by USDA. And we had hereditary cancer testing. If you had traces of cancer in any of your family, it was a good time to be tested for that. The turnout was good. For moral support, we had Thanksgiving celebration. We had three Fridays where there was a certain thing that we did on Friday staff-wide. Department Christmas tree decorating. We had a Christmas tree, a Christmas decoration contest. We had a food truck on site. And for community outreach, we participated in the Blocktoberfest, which was given by the Chamber. Summer and I are on the steering committee of the town of King Street because they're revitalizing downtown, uh, downtown King Street in a big way. We participated in a Taste of Williamsburg fundraiser through Williamsburg Tech. And we supported the welding class at Williamsburg Tech. Summer and I went out and secured 30 barrels for the welding students to make grills, and they turned out really, really well. And social media, Facebook and YouTube, our social media has grown, has grown. 64% since its inception, and we hope that it couldn't go further than that. That's because Summer backs, she said she had to watch the camera.
Public Works. Remember I said your time's starting, y'all. I call your names.
My time's up. Public Works Department. The state of our seven disaster victims.
Recycling.
I'm going to talk about some of my highlights. Thank you. We was able to purchase much-needed equipment for road and bridges, solid waste and the landfill. Much-needed trucks for solid waste and road and bridges. We went from a work zone schedule to a seven council district, which is working our career break. We complete work orders and road requests that are maintained per district and they are posted on the county website. We was able to clean the King Street canal. And over, which was a great success. We successfully hauled 440 loaner grabs to meet the CTC requirement. We have a new work order system where we can track work orders on a daily basis. We was awarded 25,000 grants from the Solid Waste Authority through DHEC to purchase six roll-off tub stock containers, 30 cubic yards. We also was awarded, or use our grant from DHEC, for gas oil mixed at 500 gallon tank to go to Indian Town Earls and Bethesda Recycling Center. We was also awarded a tire grant through DHEC for contractor cost for removal tires from the landfill. We was told that we were, we are the best organized class to landfill in the state of South Carolina. We are working so hard to keep what is recyclable out of our landfill because our life expectancy of the landfill is, it's 2028. Meaning that 2028, our landfill is supposed to close. Some of our goals are to organize and operate all work and maintenance of on-road bridges and drainage improvement. Assure the allocation of equipment, material and personnel for maintenance of road and bridges. Corning with the county citizen, employees and officials to develop and implement long and short-term plans. Maintain and enhance the delivery of service provided in Williamsburg County Public Works Department. To provide the citizens of Williamsburg County with a clean and safe environment at all recycling sites. To ensure all trash containers are dumped and cleaned on a daily basis, as well as this trash compactor. We believe that working together, we become empowered and are able to meet the goals set by our department. Thank you.
Thank you. Our probate judge.
We come as a team tonight. And we're bringing one of our own.
As the saying goes, we're a small church with a big heart. Well, we are a small staff with a big task. Probate Court, I am your probate judge for Williamsburg County, and I'd like to thank all of you. The supervisors, county council members, all of the citizens, all of our elected and appointed officials. I am Betty Matthews. In probate court, we're responsible for maintaining marriage license. Our estate records, our GCs, which are conservators and guardianships. And assisting the local alcohol and drug abuse center and mental health with judicial commitments. I have with me today my staff of two, which is my associate probate judge, Lakeisha Hugh. And my GC and mental health clerk, Jamie Wall. Our main mission here is to serve the citizens of Williamsburg County in the most efficient, professional and compassionate manner possible. Our marriage license go back to 1911. And in 2019, we issued 125. Our estate records go back to 1806. And in 2019, we issued, I'm sorry, we opened two estate cases. Assisting the citizens of Williamsburg County with probating the estate of their loved ones. We closed 331 estate cases. Our conservator case. 14 conservator cases for those who may be incapacitated or incompetent to handle their own affairs. A conservator must be appointed. We closed 21 cases and. Meaning 84 conservator cases that we now manage. In 2019, we assisted mental health and the local alcohol and drug abuse center with 36 hearings for judicial commitment. I'd like to thank our local sheriff's department for assisting us with our hearings. When you may call the probate court's office and you may get the answer that the probate judge is not in the office. Well, a lot of times I'm not in the office because of the mental hearings and alcohol and. Only do I hold hearings here in Williamsburg County. But I, whenever there's a resident that leaves and is committed to a facility outside of the county and they need a judicial commitment or judicial hearing, then I have to travel outside of the county to hold those hearings. We work closely in probate court with other departments like the treasurer's office. We get information from the clerk of court's office, the tax assessor's office and the auditor's office. This assist helps us to assist our customers with inventory and appraisements of their estates. We are looking forward to the year 2020 and what's coming up. And we're looking forward to you all coming and witnessing our probate workshops and trainings. Also, I'd like to ask the county council to work closely with our county supervisor and our sheriff's department in obtaining cameras for our file office, our filed area because we wouldn't want any of your ancestors' records to be missing. If we have that, that security system up, it will deter people from taking the files. Thank you. God bless. Thank you. Next on the list is our recreation department. There you go. Good evening. Just to recap some of the highlights for 2019 with the recreation department. I'm so close, Ralph. I would start with some of the agencies that we were able to continue to partner with for job seekers. Some of them were Sopkin Underworks, DSS, Goodwill. Although in working with those, those are just people that they place at certain sites to work. This past year, we did have a lot of employees that had been with us for a long, long time and a lot of them have retired. So we're in hopes that you all will allow us to, you know, fill those positions. With that, we had an opportunity to host an Easter event. And the partners with that was the sheriff's office, the detention center, emergency management and the transit. For the last two years, the recreation department along with the sheriff's office has held its music festival, which is held the last Saturday in July. And I can truly say for the last two years, it's been very successful. If you haven't been, I would entrust that you all will come out and enjoy the festivities that we have every year. These grant fund was already in place prior to my transition. However, we were able to finish, complete those. One was at the Raymond Scott, which is in District 5, Mr. Andy McKnight. And that grant funded source was through USDA. The other one came from the delegation, which happened in District 3 under Councilman Miller at the St. Lawrence Park. The other thing that we were able to do, the staff kind of wanted to touch up or bring some life as they put it to the front of our facility. So if you haven't been, you'll see some little landscaping, so stop by. This year, we had an opportunity to establish an eight-year football team for the first year. And this is just eight years, that's seven and eight-year-olds. Primarily eight and nine and up. This year, these individuals had an opportunity to play for our all-star team. Although they didn't win, you know, seven and eight, they just like to have fun. The other thing we were able to do with Head Start, and that's both Elaine's and Chavis'. They reached out and wanted to fill a Christmas bag with toys. I can truly, truly thank the departments that took it, I think, out of their personal pockets to help fill this endeavor. And that goes out to the Veterans Affairs, Public Works, Landfill, Solid Waste, Clerk of Court, the Management Court, Animal Care and Control, the Sheriff's Office, Detention Center, Emergency Management Division, Supervisor and the Supervisor Admin. And again, these were personal contributions, so again, thank you all for what you've given. I would also like to close by thanking the sheriff's office for anytime we have a game, they always be willing to provide us with security. To the emergency management, allowing us to use the recovery center for practices, for transit. Yeah, thank you all for helping our participants up and down the road. And definitely to Public Works when we need anything, five parts, they're able to come. Again, thank you all for allowing us to do what we done for 2019 and we look forward to 2020. Thank you. Thank you. We're gonna have the sheriff next, and then after that, IT has both their hands, so sheriff.
Oh man, I got my team. Hey, I don't have to speak about a community involved. Anyhow, the sheriff's office is all about building strong relationships between law enforcement and the community. One of the things that I want to touch on, and I'm on the blue, I already told them. Anyhow, so I wanted to explain our structure and workforce. A lot of times people think, well, what are they doing? I hear all the time, they hit that gas station, they ain't doing nothing. But let me give you some dynamics. Our patrol division is made up of 17 deputies, CID, that's Criminal Investigation. It was six people, narcotics, two people. So when you wonder why they can't solve all the drug problem, we got the two deputies working drug crimes. Civil process division, five, school resource officers, four, victim services, two, security deputies, four. Transport division, two, detention center, thirty-three, dispatch sixteen, EMD eight. Environmental services, when it comes to trash, we got two people working trash. We try to use our resources, but two. Administrative team, three, and executive level team, five. Our patrol division, that's our front line of what we do. That's the people you see out 24 hours, 365 days a year. But that's technically all of us because we were, we don't have a lot of people, so we had to fill in and get out of work. I want to give you something. I go back to the gas station scenario. A lot of times people say, you know, I seen these deputy cities, they ain't doing nothing. Let me tell you, these guys get out of work and they worked hard in 2019. 2019 was a very hard year for us. Two things to measure, hey, what did they do? Is reports written? It took in 2,383 reports that were written. It doesn't say, hey, how many calls they went to, that's just what they filed reports on. It doesn't say how much time they spent in that. Next thing, they issued 722 traffic citations. So 77% of their time and 23% of their time, 77 on doing reports, 23% on writing citations. Now, the index of crime, this is what people look at, this goes back to you, Elian. And anyhow, this is what people look at when they say, hey, why do I want to come to Williamsburg County? What's going on here? Give you some interesting numbers. We gonna start off at the top, I like to start off bad and then work down. So murder, I can use a nice word, homicide, so let's use a nice word. 2017, one, 2018, four, 2019, ten. So that's a 150% increase, and we'll get back to that. Next crimes, aggravated assault, it was a 2% increase, not a lot, not a lot of noise. Burglary, a minus 21%, auto break-in, a minus 23%. Auto theft, minus 17%, general larceny, minus 21%. Five, seven percent vandalism, a minus 10.8% and robberies, 1% increase. That's not a lot of noise and variation. So, let's go back to total numbers. 2017, it was 1,055 index crimes total for the areas identified to you. 2018, 1,011, 2019, 865. So what's that say? We all out working and we being proactive, contrary to what you hear sometimes people, they ain't doing nothing. The crime rate has come down, it's come down to 14.44%. So that's a reduction. The numbers I keep, like. But there's been a decrease. All right, civil process division, that's the people that go out and serve, 176, rules for 40, 364. As soon as they complete, 1,754 and 683. Now, going back to our success stories, I think there's a lot of things sometimes you can put the good out there. High schools, there's, there's a deputy in each school, and then we have our middle school, which is the one in King Street. One good thing about this is the funding of the sour and fridge benefits is being funded by the state. And in the gap for vehicles and uniforms, of course, isn't the cost, but it's a big favor. Success there is that we actually have law enforcement officers in our school able to interact with our kids. That's a great thing. The next thing, all those numbers that I gave, we only had one victim active. So one thing that we also had is we began this year in 2019, we received funding from the Attorney General's office so that we could fund a legal position now. One good thing, the Attorney General grant, they funded everything, so that's a great thing. But that doesn't come at the expense that we have to come and complain by. All right, next thing, this is something good that we started, actually kind of interesting. We began providing community-based assistance to seniors with a support chaplain. This chaplain checks on the wellbeing of 18 seniors in our community. Now, I imagine that'll probably increase now, right? Yeah. But what they do is they go out, you know, have a lot of, we got a growing population of the elderly people. A lot of people that live by themselves. And, and I don't want to describe the cause, but we end up with certain type of cause. So one good thing that makes them feel safer is somebody to go by and check on them and just to talk. So if you know someone that needs that, let us know. We have someone that just does that. You know, go out and make sure each person's all right, because you'd be surprised some of the calls that we get by not doing those things. Sheriff's office is changing over to a new RMS system. I think that'd be a good thing that'll give us a, put our statistics. It allows us to be uniform in how we obtain information. We replaced over 50% of our vehicle fleet. I would use this number, but I bet not say that. But anyway, we still got ways to go and help save on our maintenance costs. Oh man, giving a safer pay for one thing is Judy, is, you know, the 125, and I think we stated that before, but we're getting away with people making this cost. The next thing, going back to the index crimes, the sheriff's office had 10 murders in 2019. Through teamwork and supportive assistance agencies, the sheriff's office solved eight of the 10 murders. Now, that's why I'm gonna stop right there. I hear all the time, we can't solve a crime. That's not true. Deputies working at that sheriff's office down there work hard. I gave you the numbers, not to be sarcastic, I gave you the numbers to show that that's the dedication of men and women there. Because they want to serve this community, they want to work, they work their mouths. They're missing from their families, but that's a result of what they do. That's a result of the teamwork of all your law enforcement in this community. So, this gave the sheriff's office a clearance rate of 80% for this violent offense. Because the one thing, our property crimes at all has gone down, as I told you. The one thing that we all have a problem with across the state is not just in Williamsburg County. So please don't leave anything in this G T. This is across the state, look it up, the numbers are there. Lot of crime is on the rise everywhere. I anticipated doing my point, but that's Tommy, so we all gotta be together to watch out for Tommy. Because that's how we can take care of Tommy. Actuaries presentations is something that we do. We started off doing that, it was just churches, but that's grown to the population of, you know, business, anything we do, you can hear. You know, how do we prepare for that? How do we protect ourselves? That's the day and time that we live in. And the last part is the passion served by this doesn't end after each year. Our deputies are intertwined in our community, giving back and helping to make Williamsburg County a better and more vibrant place to live. Thank you for your time. If we can ever be here, call us at the sheriff's office.
Good afternoon. My name is Diane Bousk, and I'm the director of Williamsburg County Emergency Management and 911. Some of our highlights for 2019. We host a spring-fall distribution each year that serves over 1,000 citizens with fresh vegetables and fruits. We have earthquake workshops, we did a pond workshop. We host CPR classes on a, ever so often. We also host blood drive, we had a public safety awareness fair. We also found the Williamsburg County School District during the summer months. And we go around to all of the elementary schools and teach the children about how to prepare for storms and also when to call and when not to call 911. We also have a simulator trailer, if you hadn't seen it, it's on the grounds of the red department. Where we go to schools, special events throughout the county. We also hosted tornadoes and earthquake drills at all of the schools in Williamsburg County. We hosted seven concealed weapons classes. We have one person who serviced all of the public safety radio equipment for all the public safety agency. We also housed and helped support the US Postal Inspection Inspectors from September 24th until December the 4th. So they were with us for a while. We have monthly search classes, monthly co-ed meetings. We also have AmeriFor, which is housed inside of the emergency management office, and he's there on a daily basis. We also have Red Cross, which is housed in our building, he comes every Wednesday. Williamsburg County Dispatch answered 65,562 calls in 2019. They dispatched for both city and county. For law enforcement alone, they dispatched 23,331 calls. For EMS, they dispatched 6,814 calls. And for both city and county, for the fire department, they dispatched 25,212 calls in 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, ITU again.
Information technology. With technology, we can do things like talk to you without standing in front of you. And appear at places where you don't see it coming. Time also started. Long time. You look up information technology, you'll see it's defined as the use of computers to store, retrieve, transmit and manipulate data or information. IT works with every county, every person in the city, in the county. Let me tell you. Think of IT as illustration, if IT was the heart, we got veins going out to every department, every city. And those veins, instead of bodily fluids, we're sending information back and forth. We work with every department, just like taxes, Kim Norman, that's what they taught, we work with them and their vendors. Sheriff office with their vendors, SLED, get information out, 911, your calls. Communication means somebody's life. IT is there. Clerk's office with a new program, they talked about PACs, we there, talking to them, implementing and installing. IT is more than just computers. It's computers, cell phones, networking, tablets, servers, firewalls, protection, anything you can think of. One person said to me that IT deals with anything that blood will happen, more than one vendor, y'all deal with it. So, right there, that's over 30 departments and over 60 vendors that we deal with on a daily basis. It is not unusual for us to deal with 20 to 30 calls a day, at best, phone calls to our cell phones, text messages, chat messages. And we have to be available 24/7 to answer those calls, to make sure that each and every one of you can work and do your job to provide services to each other and to citizens of Williamsburg County. So, what about disasters? IT is there. We stay here because like I said, communication is a major factor with IT. Cell phones also. We're with a few counties of this side with IT controls and programs for our entire county. We also deal with outside agencies here in IT, like voter registration. At one time, we were the only IT department in the state that did process elections. And I know we just got some new election machines that we are working with to get ready for the next presidential process that's coming up. So, on top of our other duties, we have other duties. Everything that we do, we do to help citizens of Williamsburg County and their customers. And as you can see with technology, my time's also up. I'm gonna step away from the mic.
Thank you. Our tax assessor cannot be here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Met Jordan, I'm the interim executive director of Transit. For those of us at Williamsburg County Transit, 2019 was quite a learning experience. We acquired two new 22-passenger carway vehicles. We advanced our technological and communication assets by implementing one of the most sophisticated dispatching software that included utilization of tablets, extensive driver and staff training and vehicle map tracking. Our rodeo team participated on the state level in March at the rodeo, they placed third. And also, permission allowed them an opportunity, a learning opportunity, as well as a chance to refresh and enhance the skills that are required in daily operation of those duties. We participated in county and local events and festivals to promote our services to the citizens of Williamsburg County. And it's quite clear, our world was then turned upside down. There have been so many changes that no one could have anticipated but have heard. We're in the process of turning our elements into a aid. It is a challenge, but we continue to work with the Williamsburg County Government as well with our state partners to meet challenges and move forward. We must do so. We are going, we will recruit qualified and safety-conscious drivers as well as support personnel. And also take advantage of all the learning opportunities offered to us by the county as well as our state partners. This will allow us to move forward by learning things that we may not be aware of, but we need to know to seize. This will allow us to move forward by learning things that we may not be aware of, but we need to know to succeed. We will find ways to improve the morale of our employees. By improving morale, we keep our employees happy, as well as the people of Williamsburg County. Our citizens will see that and will show and work, and that is what we need. We'll continue to promote and market the services of Williamsburg County Transit to the community, to increase their awareness. There are so many people out there who still are not aware of what we provide. And there is a need amongst our community for people who have a lack of transportation to be able to get to the places they need to go. And that's the business that we are in for the citizens of Williamsburg County. All of these goals will culminate in increasing revenues as well as ridership, and it can be achieved through cooperation, communication, respect, and pride in the job line.
Thank you. Benson's a bear. Oh, there it goes.
I'm Robert McClair, Williamsburg County Veteran Affairs. I want everybody to understand, our office has two employees, we have pensions, compensation claims, insurance, education, funeral benefits, healthcare benefits, surviving family benefits, whole lot of the candidates, and we service whole town veterans in Williamsburg County with two people covering nine hundred and thirty-seven square miles. You should realize that, two people. Our office is continuing to be nationally accredited, we have to do eighty hours of continuing education during a year per person. And, uh, I'm gonna cut some cliff notes short, because I want to tell a quick story again. In two thousand eighteen, we had almost twenty-five hundred veterans in the county. Total dollar benefit for Williamsburg County we brought in was twenty-four point nine million dollars. Over two thousand nineteen, we've lost almost four hundred veterans due to attrition of leaving, deaths. But we continue to increase the benefit to twenty-four point nine million dollars with four hundred personnel lost. I'm very proud of that in our office. But the biggest thing on, tonight, I want everybody to realize, and the sheriff brought this up only going, I'm gonna bust him out right here. The council needs to realize how the departments are actually working together now. I'm gonna give you an example. I had my assistant out on maternity leave this year. I had a meeting, I had to be to, to the governor's office. I get a phone call from a ninety-year-old widow who has a sixty-year-old mentally handicapped son who's lost and stole his car. I don't know where to start, we got one person in my office, we got nine hundred and thirty-seven square miles. I called the sheriff's office. We find a veteran in Ori County being held in detention center not for a time, but because he's lost. Mother can't get there, I can't get there, I have to go to the governor's office. Sheriff's office covered down and went and picked that veteran up, brought him home safely, got him to his mother, and she was calm. But I want everybody to realize here, that's not just our two departments, that's every department out here, okay? And we need more stories like that going out in county. And, um, all I ever hear when county is picturing about money and everything else. We need to use the resources we got and make it work, and that is my time.
They're mighty happy, I'm the last one. Um, I'm lame, that's a Williamsburg County Ward, so, uh, just wanna go over two accomplishments today in two thousand nineteen. On number one, we initiated an online and automated phone payment system for our Ward customers. This is a long overdue. Uh, we started this April two thousand and eighteen. Um, this allows the customers to pay their monthly bill with a credit card, debit card, on account of website, number one. Or they can call and, um, go through an automated line over the phone system and, uh, hand the credit card numbers up to the phone. Don't have to speak to a utility building clerk, um, and also wait on one ass to phone, so they can give them that information. We're fortunate to have that, that in process. Next accomplishment was the, uh, we completed construction of the Bethesda Water Project. The areas that included the iron ground from Century Lane north to Cade Road. Then we took, uh, east on Cade Road, went down to Bradley Bay Road, uh, covered Bradley Bay Road all the way up to, uh, almost Dewey College. Also got Better Lane in. We completed that November two thousand and eighteen, and we finished up in August two thousand and nineteen. That project cost us over eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, roughly nine percent of that was funded by CDVD and RIA grants. Uh, so we didn't have to come up with all that money. Total length of the project was six miles, uh, we added four new customers. Uh, next project that we just got started on, uh, Charlotte Earl Water Project Division One. Uh, this area includes Highway three seventy-seven, south of five twenty-one, Karen Church Road, Charleston Road, Sandy Road, Jane Harper Road. I can go on and on, but I'm just kinda giving you the area. It'll eventually go east to, uh, Cat Road on Seaboard and Highway five twenty-one. We began that in July two thousand and nineteen. It's an eighteen-month project, so we're expected to complete that by January twenty twenty-one. Uh, that project cost over two billion dollars, it's funded by, ten billion dollars, excuse me, funded by USDA Rural Development Grant and Loan Combination. Uh, all in all, it's sixty miles of water line. Uh, when we finished the project out, we had two hundred and forty-five people signed up to connect. And we know as construction is ongoing, we have more people coming in, ready to connect. Next, we completed vegetation management system around all of the county-owned fire hydrants. I know, he's hoping, I think he must have already left, I don't know who'd be glad that we got that done, so he can see the fire hydrants in the middle of the night, that, um, grass and pine trees and all going around. Um, county owns nine hundred and ninety-six, nine hundred and eighty-six hydrants total. Um, we had a contract to come in, actually cut the vegetation and sprayed around six hundred and thirty-three, similar to a round mix. And, uh, all of them, he only had to spray around about two hundred and seventy-two. So we're glad to get that done, finished that up, that's all. Lastly, uh, we installed a total of forty-six new water taps that's outside these other major construction projects. Uh, brings our total up to twenty-eight hundred and forty-seven total customers. Just to put that in perspective, when I first came to work here in two thousand and twelve, we had nine hundred and five, so we have over tripled our customer count, so pretty good a call. Thank you.
Well, just when I thought I was finished, how did I leave out her GIS mapping session? So please, come on up, and I promise y'all that last was us. This office, oh, I'm sorry, my name is Duran Alexa, I'm in the GIS addressing and mapping office. This office has one employee that remains, maintains the database for the entire county and all the first responders and other agency. Once that information enters the system, other offices can see it, which can use for their transactions. Such as assessors, the auditors, and everyone else that need watering, or Tessa Sessa. And especially the citizens that use the GIS online. Williamsburg County GIS, GIS means geographic information system, database, and a continued process as citizens frequently change addresses. Whether they're moving to another locale, building structure, or adding something which may require an address for utility purposes. For all farmers, real estate agents, SEC or FTC, lawyers, to name a few. Our system is user-friendly, which enables and is helpful to the citizens to find information on the GIS information data detailing if a riot features in Williamsburg County. And all I'm telling you, this information is on the, uh, county, uh, website. On the map, to use our think GIS tools, you select from the tool menu and point to any location on the GIS list, all named, boundaries that contain within those margins. And I ask you to go on it and play with it a little bit, so you can understand what I'm talking about. Currently, cemeteries have been added to the database. There have been a growing demand for cemetery addresses for various reasons. Once this project is completed, you'll be able to see the name and address of your desired search. This is a slow process, as a lot of trustees and overseers are deceased that are listed on some of the old cemetery deeds. No matter how daunting or challenging the task becomes, we do administer addresses and strive to locate possible parties. And this office also had our makes map for law enforcement, and I was recently involved with the, uh, postal, I helped with that. We make potential maps for potential political campaigns, whether it's the city, county, or the school board. Receive requests for new road names and signs. I haven't received too many, when I do, I refer to our sign tech who's housed at the EMD's office. New addresses layers, working on that. GIS has several hundred new addresses in twenty nineteen. Our cemetery listing, as I said, is in progress. County recycling sites, I made a layer for that. County fire stations, county structure, county, uh, recreation parks and buildings, thanks to Dr. Rice, she's been working on that. Currently working on bridges with the help from our DOT, he's helping with that. Because sometimes the dispatchers may not know where the bridges are, but our first responders may know. But the dispatchers also need to know, that needs to pop up on the screen for them. We are working, currently working with layers, and that's to, and that's working progress. I have increasingly growing entry of churches. Once a store closes, a church pops up, trust me. Actively working with L-Cat, Little Control Act Team, come out of pride, team up to clean up. Our Senator, uh, made reference to that when he talked about our team up to clean up. The goal, one day in the not-so-distant future, be able to enter into my system and that information is automatically updated to the CAT, to nine-one-one dispatch center, without going through a lengthy uploading process. They know what I'm talking about. Alright. The greatest and accommodating grace is this office's relocation convenience to citizens. I thank Dr. Rice for her vision. This enables the citizens to be assisted in a timely manner versus having them stressed out driving from the PSA building to the EMD building. Trust me, by the time they get me there, really worked up. So now they just go across the hall and get worked up. They, uh, code enforcement, assessors' office, and sometimes treasurer's office, I'm upset with them too. So they come in my office and then, I thank you.
Alright, let's please give all, yes, I'm saying?
Yeah.
You ain't the one.
Yeah, yes ma'am. Um, one thing I wanted to address because of a stress in the form, was Judge Ryan using counsel to that problem with the cameras. But she didn't realize, and counsel didn't realize, IT met with grants and administration last week to make phone calls and address that, and that we're looking for a USDA security grant to address your problem currently.
Great.
Always working behind scenes.
Let's give all of our county team a round of applause.